Legion. Who's not, would you say the pledge of allegiance?
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. Katie, would you please make sure that you have a listing of all health means. Uh, here to uh, Clark, um, and then to anybody else. Our glad to have everybody here today. Um, first thing on the, a third thing on the agenda is minutes here. I'm looking for a motion in a second for the approval of the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three village board meeting and to file the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three parks and rec board. The June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three architectural review board. The June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three finance committee. The June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three planning commission minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion.
A second.
In a motion and a second, is there any discussion or corrections on these minutes that you'd like to see entered in?
I do have a question.
Thank you.
Uh, can we board on this one up? Can we do this separate? Do we have to do separately that went out all?
Well, I'm sorry, no, 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 okay. So I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I'm only wanting to approve the last meeting minutes and file the other ones.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. File, just to file.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. So morning and second, no questions other than that excellent question. I trust your answer. Uh, all favors say hi.
Hi.
Right. Motion carries. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to request to be heard on a non-agenda item? All right, we'll move to uh, business presented by the president. I just have a couple of announcements I'd like to make. First of all, it's really important that everybody here, all the trustees understand that if you have an item you wish to be brought to the agenda, I want to clarify that process. If you have something you would like to see on the agenda, please give us a couple of weeks' notice and please email me that agenda item. The reason for that is is that Jesse and I do have twice a week meetings and we each have a very long list of things we'd like each other to do. And that's something that we discuss. I will respond back to you within a reasonable amount of time saying, yep, we'll put that on an agenda. If I don't think it needs to go on the agenda, I'll just write to you and say, hey, give me an idea why you think we need to have this on. Is that acceptable to everybody here?
Yes.
Sounds great. Second thing is I'd like to say that I did have a quick update today with our um, village staff. And we're going to establish a process uh, process here in which we track constituents, concerns, complaints and um, and uh, kudos for our staff. Um, it asks that you give, give us a couple of uh, couple of months to put this together, but we'd like to have a spreadsheet that's presented to each one of the committees so that we can kind of get a trend. I mean, I don't really want to know that um, that um, Ms. Haynes missed her um, brush pickup, but I'd like to see trends of of concerns and then like how long it takes us to respond to those. So that's something I'm going to be asking each, uh, well, actually the major committees, which would be PSC, um, Public Works, um, and that would be our rec. And um, I think clerk's office too, we have some major concern, but we'll start with those four and then we'll take it from there. Um, I'd like to also thank trustee loop on the PSC and her group while coming up with a um, uh, process for minutes. Um, I really like the idea of what she's done here and going through with a, with a group. Um, one of the things this is that often times we're contacted by constituents and they say, hey, I, why wasn't my brush picked up? I'm using that example, keep that one to death tonight. But in fact, what we should be doing as trustees is listening intently and just make sure that we pass those folks back to the directors. Um, and you know, let the first person know that director just can get back and you know, reasonable amount of time um, that they should call him back. In that case, we would ask that if there's a concern um, from the trustees, get that back to the um, chair of the committee. So the chair of the committee can, I take that up as an uh, an agenda item. Uh, if somebody has a request for like, let's say a new stop sign or something like that, or um, a traffic, um, we would ask that uh, uh, we encourage people to show up at the public safety committee meeting, where Public Works to discuss that. And we can take it from there. Um, lastly, I do understand that uh, we've had quite a few concerns from heritage. I know heritage and so we run. I did, I've been up there numerous times to take a look at the progress of that. I would like to um, suggest that communication for that be taken back to Public Works. So Public Works can talk perhaps about a communication plan and uh, and moving forward in the future. Uh, was that, would that be acceptable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Sorry for the long uh, business present uh, presented by the president. I think I got everything here. And so what we'll do is we'll go on to the resolutions um, and uh, some agenda items that have been brought up by, um, I will. All y'all on these. So first thing we'll uh, have here is uh, this, this came to us, uh, we would like to discuss the uh, uh, review and discussion of the village's social media policy. Jesse, can you do a quick intro on this one? Cause I know it's been from, from us as a village board.
Certainly, um, our current social media policy is a broad-based policy um, adopted back in twenty twelve. Um, now granted, that is some time ago when thinking about in terms of technology. However, um, you know, the, the cursory review of it, um, it's aged quite well. The social media policy is really primarily based around the concept of First Amendment. The First Amendment uh, basically states that as a citizen, you have the freedom of speech um, to um, voice concerns. However, what isn't covered by the First Amendment is representing yourself as an employee or an official of the village and voicing those concerns. That is not protected. And so really, that is what the current social media policy revolves around. So frankly, it's aged quite well. You know, the platforms may have changed or what have you, but the core content, if you will, is, is still very applicable um, in today's standards. That said, uh, this policy is reviewed. Um, it would have been uh, distributed to all existing employees um, at the time of adoption. And then um, any new hires, this is part of that orientation process whereby we go through it um, as part of everything from clothing policies to the employee handbook, to benefits, to what have you. This is part of the orientation process as well. Um, it's important to note, um, and I did uh, purposely um, attach the meeting minutes from when the policy was adopted because it is very unique in that there is a very specific point raised that um, our social media policy does not apply um, to um, elected officials. It is strictly for um, employees of the village. That is a bit of the historical context there for the group.
Thank you, Jesse. And I just want to reiterate to everybody who's here, you are all trustees, all elected by um, citizens of graphing. Uh, we invite, uh, we announced, we invite members of the community to show up. Right, the press to show up, you have a very large voice when you're here. Use it. Uh, and that, that becomes such a, such a key thing to what we got here. Speak up if you don't agree with something. Again, as a board, we should be speaking as one. With that said, there's always room for dissent. I encourage that we have dissent on that. So with that um, discussion, uh, anybody wants to discuss this here, if this policy needs to be updated for staff? If we have inclusion, some type of inclusion for um, for uh, village officials, elected officials. Dave, why don't we start with you down there?
I have no comment.
No comment from Dave, very good. Mary Pat?
Um, I thi- I think it's a good policy. I read through it and it's, I read uh, quite a few things. I think as the village board, we should adhere to these recommendations that are very, they're, they're very simple. You know, it's, it's common sense, it's sound judgment. So I, I think that we could adhere to this, this policy as well.
Very good. Thank you. Jim?
Oh yeah, I like the idea, I. You know, this past spring, we had a couple in the election and quite honestly, Dan, you were on social media quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Good, bad, whatever. It seems like then it was okay. Now you're trying to reel it in a little bit.
I think you need to be careful with that trustee Miller because I am not trying to go with that. I'm just thinking of a separate discussion and I will adhere. However, whatever decision was made by this group, there was, as you see here, we were exempt, you're exempt, I'm exempt, everybody on this board is exempt from discussing things. I think that uh, there is also, there are times when we as, as elected officials want to get our message out on what we stand for. So that's a little different. For once, uh, I don't believe that I said anything about a specific policy that I was put on. Nonetheless, I'm not asking for exemption from this, I'm asking. That's all I'm.
And then providing that.
That's fine, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
So I was the one that asked to review this because I, you know, we have some new trustees. Um, we do have new trustee on the board and I feel that there are some of them that have been posting some things that I want to make sure they are protected. And I didn't know um, elected officials were covered under this process or not, or this policy. So my question is, where is this policy for employees? Because I looked through the employee handbook and I didn't find it anywhere.
Correct, it is a standalone policy document. Um, it was adopted long ago and far away and for whatever reason not incorporated into the uh, um, handbook and therefore I did not bring it forward as part of the handbook either. Um, it is posted in each of the bulletin boards within the departments and all the employees have signed off that they have received this policy um, upon hire as well. That said, I would have to verify that all the bulletin boards still contain the, the policy posting. It should, um, but if not, we would have to replace it, but.
And I did ask at the desk this morning and two people couldn't find it.
Hmm, um, yeah, I'm positive it's on our back bulletin board, but I.
I personally think it should be in the employee handbook because social media is such a big thing right now. And I would like to have another policy for elected officials. Or do we expand on this and maybe it's called public and social media policy? With the public being like TV, radio, newspapers, so that all avenues are covered. There's no policy number on here, there's no date on here, it's not on the much letterhead. So I just think that there could be some updates to weeks just to bring it up to speed with twenty twenty-three. Um, there's also nothing listed on here on is there permission to post pictures on social media? Are we getting consent? Are we using our branding or what's our style guide? I don't know if that falls into this, what about PR crisis? Who do we go to? So I think there is a little tweaking that could be done.
Sure.
All I have. Your presence.
Thank you. We go to you, um, if, if we're going to make these changes, what committee does this go to? And Jesse, with this go to finance, given personnel?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll probably roll this back to personnel if we decide to do that as a board. Um, Lisa?
So I want to ask, like, um, so as elected official, are there rules and Robert's rules that talk about us as officials and being public and um, you know, I guess I'm thinking that where, where we would find our rules as a lesson? Is that accurate?
Probably, yes.
And I did have time to look, I apologize to. Right, cause I feel like that where, where we are, you know, granted, we're, we're somewhat of an employee here too. We should follow rules also, but we may have different, different rules.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I would make a statement if I may on that, we are not employees, we're elected officials.
Right, well, I, yes, we are, but this is an elected.
Yes. I, I think where we might want to go with this is to move this back to finance and uh, again, I would look for a suggestion from all of you, provide at least some consensus that we bring it back there. And perhaps we look at um, what the league brings in um, on public comment on uh, and uh, when we take a look at that, say, we believe there is a considerable amount of information on the league. Uh, and also our ethics policy, be able to make sure that that's, that that's consistent. Is there consensus on bringing it back to um, um, finance committee?
Dan, may I chime in before we have that uh, discussion?
I'm sorry, Clark, I can't hear you.
May I chime in before uh, we take consensus on whether to move it back to finance?
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of points, uh, one, since you're talking about the league here. I was recently at the league's uh, local government one-on-one course and this did come up briefly as part of that discussion. Um, we, no one is a problem when they are just one person speaking uh, in terms of an elected official. It's when you have multiple elected officials engaging with each other in that medium, talking about village-related business where it becomes a problem. So I definitely support the idea of taking the guidance from the league and incorporating that into our processes as elected officials. Uh, more broadly, in terms of this particular policy, um, I think I would like to see the part about elected officials being exempt from it explicitly stated in there as opposed to just being part of the motion. Um, I do agree wholeheartedly with what Mary Pat said in terms of we should strive to uphold uh, these ideals ourselves as well. But in terms of a formal policy, I would recommend that we be considered separately explicitly. And thinking about this in terms of beyond just village-related business and the conduct of one's duties, I would recommend being explicit about uh, employees have the freedom of First Amendment protections, freedom of speech for things that they do on their personal social media that are very clearly not related to village business, that they will not be advantaged or disadvantaged in their job duties based off of whatever they might say in terms of uh, social media postings. Again, that should be straightforward, it's part of the First Amendment, but just having it explicitly spelled out there, I think can be beneficial in terms of conveying confidence in the employees' duties from the village board.
Very good, any further comment?
So, um, Mike, can we also expect to see something from Robert's rules too, if there is anything?
Certainly.
Okay, we should, okay, no. That took me.
Yeah, and I think Robert's rules specifically for meetings, but that's.
Well, I think there's other information in Robert's.
Updated the issue.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah. That would be great, so, all right, so we have consensus to bring this back to um, bring this back to the uh, finance committee, do we need a motion on that?
Uh, consensus direction to staff, if you just want to go down the line that, to make sure it is a consensus of the board, that would be fine, I don't see the need for a formal referral, Mike, consensus direction would be fine.
All agree with you.
Right, okay, so just a consensus.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to um, review and discussion of committing amusement devices. I know this is at the top, like, game up a couple of uh, meetings ago and um, uh, moved through it pretty quickly. Um, so Jesse, let's uh, let's take a look at this one.
Certainly, the, the ten thousand foot level um, background to this topic, if you will, um, there are amusement devices um, permitted uh, by code throughout the village, um, whether it is a device within um, a local establishment or the rocking horse at Meyer. Um, there are different types of devices. The long and short of it is the ordinance um, does prohibit um, gambling devices. Um, that being said, um, while the village can issue permits for these items or, or devices, if you will, um, and collect a fee for it, that is our, under local jurisdiction. It is, if there is a concern with a particular device as to whether or not it flies in the face of state law, i.e. gambling, um, that is uh, Department of Revenue uh, jurisdiction whereby a complaint would have to be submitted to the Re- uh, Department of Revenue for enforcement. The village does not have enforcement authority in that particular area.
Okay, and I, I see that uh, Mike, you did um, uh, give us some opinion here of, of what actually is a court gambling machine, amusement device. Um, and certainly, uh, you know, from what I did also reach out to um, uh, Attorney General, he, and he had, um, what desire he had in prosecuting these um, silence is acceptance. So uh, to me, I did not hear back from him. Um, so I didn't, and I was very explicit that I wanted this, um, wanted feedback from him. Doesn't appear that like people want to enforce this given that's separated between um, the Department of Revenue and the Department of Justice with limited um, police.
Yeah, that, uh, that's probably fair to say, I tried, I know I, I have a long-winded letter here. I tried to lay out for the board the facts of the, the law so that you'd understand. I mean, it's kind of somewhat complicated, but, but basically, uh, yes, Jesse outlined uh, gambling machines are different than amusement devices. I wanted to make clear a couple of things. The law is quite explicit that uh, the special agents at the Department of Revenue have enforcement and investigation authority. It's really, call it whatever you want, liquor lobby or whatever, but uh, the fact is even our own department uh, is recruited from investigating. When we, when we see the registration, people, business owners fill out a form that represent to us that these are amusement. You know, they're asking for uh, to register the amusement places, right? These stuff is, it's all in hold, it's, it's early, it's not, it's. And we have limited authority, I don't, I don't uh, even, there's even limited authority to act, there's no authority to act on liquor license. So I'm, I'm just trying to leave the, leave the, give you the law um, um, specifically on gambling machines. Unless somebody complains about it, that action could be taken. And I, actually, I think even a complaint would have to be referred to the uh, Department of Revenue. Okay. What, what, I don't know what would happen about that, yeah.
From what I understand is that the Department of Revenue has four or five agents statewide.
That's right.
Um, they, they look at a thousand dollar fines. Uh, and then again, I'm kind of paraphrasing, unless, if there are two video gambling machines, anything under five is their, their responsibility. Anything over five is the Department of Justice. And we've not seen a lot of seizures of these until there is a ongoing issue. Um, multiple complaints, uh, multiple warnings and then the fines start flying. I, I believe that we have that situation where there's a lot of, obviously, we, we can't do a lot on it.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't appear the state wants to do that, it doesn't appear that district attorney wants to prosecute these cases or state attorney will want to prosecute these cases unless it's huge.
Um, I have a question. So they, they fill out an application, they, and then do you dispense the um, tickers or the seals?
No, I, I dispense a, basically a card stuck on a piece of paper um, saying how many licenses they've declared that they're, that they have. They're supposed to be writing down the description of the device that they're registered. Um, I still don't do, but.
I thought I saw somewhere that there was a seal that goes on this machine.
They have to be labeled for amusement purposes, I believe. That's up to the bar to label them for amusement purposes only. Oh, and we don't issue that, sort of. Okay, I shouldn't say the card that says the big license.
You know, I don't I, I don't um, desire to use these type of machines. So I don't look to see that they're labeled as amusement devices only versus a gambling machine. So I, I've never really taken a look at that. So I would think these machines pretty much are for amusement only, don't use these. Yeah. So.
And also to keep in mind what's included in this, also pool tables, chew boxes, Sandy the riding pony, um, claw machines, it's not just those video or. Or start boards.
So um, I think, anybody else have any comment or question on this at all?
I believe trustee Evans may.
Sorry?
I believe trustee Evans may.
Hey, hey, I'm sorry, I catch you on my left eye, that doesn't work well, but I'll come, I'll get you every time here, Clark.
No worries, thank you, President Dorit. I have a question clarification for attorney Herbrand. Um, so does this prohibition against investigating uh, for these gambling machines uh, for only the Department of Revenue only relate to bars and taverns? So I was looking, the Department of Administration suggests that if it's outside of a bar tavern, so any other location, to contact your local law enforcement agency, which would suggest that there are some venues that we would have local jurisdiction on. But I trust your opinion more than something from the Department of Adminis- Administration's website, so just wanted clarification on that.
Yeah, I could look into that, but uh, my, my, the letter that I gave you was primarily licensed uh, licensed establishments. Um, because I, my perception that that's where most of the concern was. Um, I could look into that, Clark, on the ability of the uh, local police department to investigate uh, outside of licensed establishments, that, that may be the case.
Great, and so a follow-up question to that perhaps for uh, Katie then is, do we have any machines that are currently licensed that are not in uh, a liquor licensed holding location?
I guess you, by that you would mean primarily the gambling machines.
Ye- yes, specifically, well, I think even generally anything that is licensed, uh, cause ideally we shouldn't have any gambling machines licensed, uh, cause they're illegal, but are there other machines that are licensed that are not in liquor licensed facilities?
I do not have any licensed machines outside of the licensed um, liquor establishments or alcohol establishments. So there are none to my knowledge. I mean, whether they have them or not, I wouldn't know, but um, I don't license any outside of the license, alcohol licenses having.
That, that's where I tried to point out the hot case where even, you know, a gambling machine, it may look like a duck and quack like a duck, but it may not be a duck if it, if it gives out free, free play, free replays and things like that, it may be done a little uh, amusement device. I, but the president don't, don't go in, there's all these things, so I don't know exactly what they're all doing.
Well, and I, and I think that the important point here is where we've seen some state law enforcement action was at a um, a gas station um, where they had some quasi amusement device and they actually, I think there's a lot of case law based on that one. Uh, however, um, the people, they would be in fuel stations, uh, most of both places, so you're and so that they're, they're uh, not necessarily a licensed buyer, but they're um, a uh, uh, a investigator, yeah, so I, I think that's where we would see, you know, we'd obviously have a little bit of, not even, you know, I'm just, I'm sorry, please don't quote me. But if uh, if and say it had one, uh, they, they sell liquor as well. It would be somebody like a candy store, that if they had one, then we'd have an issue with it, we'd have to deal on complete, correct?
And so hearing that there are none outside of class B licensed establishments, I am content not pursuing anything further in terms of further guidance from attorney Herbrand.
Very good, any other discussion on this? Uh, thank you for bringing that up, there's no action uh, for this at this time. So we, we will move on to the uh, review and discussion of citizen committee member information posted online. Jesse, let's just get us started on that.
Uh, just an established practice on the village's website as we list the names and contact information for only elected officials um, throughout our website. Um, that said, a question was asked about um, listing citizen committee member contact information as well. Um, to provide context to the discussion, I took a look at neighboring communities and um, all but one um, do not list citizen member private uh, uh, or excuse me, personal contact information. Um, the village of Belgium uh, does issue um, village email addresses to it, all of its plan commission members, whether it's elected or citizen members. Um, the village of Sockville does list um, personal contact information for uh, citizen members um, as well as elected officials. Um, all other um, communities only list um, elected officials. Um, poor Washington is unique in that it does not list either, it's simply um, ha- has it um, in, in a different place, it is not with individual committee listings, uh, that elected official contact information. Um, and so that's a quick overview.
Sounds good, I, I know um, trustee, our vacuum, um, originally had dropped this up for discussion because I think we've had some concerns. Uh, and I just want to ask if you bring this up, uh, with your concerns that you have.
Sure, sure, so um, some citizens had contacted me about trying to get in contact with uh, members of the plan commission. The secret people are certain about, that are coming on, wanted to be able to send them an email directly. Um, I think maybe in the end, Jessica, they may have sent you an email instead, possibly. Um, so a number of them said that they were disappointed that there was no way for them to, to directly give that uh, committee member their feedback. So I kind of looked at the website, at our website, and I saw that even our trustees who are on the committee. So I kind of looked at the website, at our website, and I saw that even our trustees who are on the committees. There's not a link to our information on it, so you would have to go back to those boards, put in our name and by the. Whether it's our email or phone number. So, um, I guess wanting to make things transparent or easier for the citizens to give people a comment, I wanted that talked about. Um, and I think that Sockville does, all their committees have, um.
They do.
Yeah, all the committees, my commission is on the one of the deals. Um, I'm assuming that they also pay a seventy-two dollar per year address if it's a village. Maybe that committee members use their personal.
Uh, what I saw on Sockville's website, it was personal phone numbers and if, I, I think it was personal emails, I don't recall for sure. I know Belgium's uh, was uh, village issued email addresses for those plan commission members. And depending on what they use, I, I can't speak to their license fees, if we were to follow that model. It would be seventy-two dollars per year per address that we would issue.
Right, and again, I don't, I don't necessarily think an email, but maybe a phone number, some way that. Um, citizen can talk to a member of the. Park and rec, you know, they're talking about new construction down at Ben Park, you know, some of those committee members. You know, may not be able to. So that was something I thought before, it's a, again, it, me, it's well, if the citizens can find us. And they can find us, they just can't find the other members of the committees.
Amy, let's go.
Um, I'm fine with the way it is, I think if people were looking to get in touch with somebody, they can contact the hotel and. Hotel could reach out to us and. Asking, we could, if our information could be released.
Yeah. I think we want to try and make the processes. Easy as possible. And if that's including. A person's telephone number, I don't think that's aligned. And, and save it at seventy-two dollars. Acceptable to me. Thank you, Clark, not gonna forget you this time.
I appreciate that, um, so I know office three sixty-five, which the village uses, uh, has the ability to do email lists. And so I admit to wanting to respect the privacy of the committee members who are on our various boards and committees. But would it be possible as sort of a hybrid or compromise solution? To consider having lists, like there's a plan commission list that is like plan dash commission at village dot grafton dot wei dot U S. Where a member of the public could email that address and it reaches all of the members of the plan commission. But those members of the plan commission don't have their personal contact information public and can choose not to respond if they so desire. So that's where I would kind of land if we were to go forward with uh, putting their contact information uh, in the public view.
Thank you, Clark, very good.
Um, I agree with Amy, I don't think things need to be changed, that they need to reach us, they can reach out to village. All to get any information or relay information to us. Um, I find it, I, I'm interested in what Clark has to say though, that if we just have a, a main. Uh, email address that goes to the planning commission and whatnot, would, would also suplex.
While we're having this, this discussion, I just put on my own app on the village website. And it does have my email address, well, the village email address, but. My phone number. I don't know why that I want that information out, because I don't want them calling me in the middle of the night, you know, they, so, you know. Uh, I don't see the importance of that, that we have a phone number out there, they want to get ahold of me, they know how to get ahold right now. Put you my email.
Um, a couple of comments here too, that, that I found as I dug into this, um, I, I want to let everybody, I appreciate Katie very quickly after the elections. Got our, our website updated, uh, with, with all the correct names, I mean, that's, that's. Quite a big, a big task to do, given the fact that we have multiple, multiple teams, uh, multiple committees. It's, it's tough to manage that whole picture. I think the second thing is, is I, I. I'm opposed to giving the name of the personal contact information for people who volunteer behind these committees. Um, that I have a concern with. I think I trust our department directors enough and one of the reasons why I've asked for constituent tracking to come up here. To be able to say, look, if, if you've got emails on this, Jessica, I know you send out emails to the, the planning commission saying. On X, Y, Z wrote in and here's, here's the information there. Um, I'm comfortable with that, I think, um, I, uh. I think we would have a really hard time finding people to volunteer for these committees if we gave all, all their personal information, their phone number. Or their private email address, I wouldn't be opposed to trying to see if they could come up with some type of a mobile email that would go out. Um, that's controlled through um, uh, our mail network, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think as far as listing phone numbers, contacts, I'm opposed to that. So.
Is it possible to look into the market, Jessica?
I think that's a great idea. Let's see if we can take a look at that, um, so we can, we can find out.
Yep.
You are?
Uh, Bill Harback, nine oh seven seventeen, they have. Uh, if I can just provide my, my thoughts about this, and I know where it started, it was at a plan commission meeting relating to one of the developments. And uh, one of the planning commission members said, I've never gotten more email on any topic than this, I think it was trying. Um, and other people were, for example, where can you find her email address? And a lot of people said, it's really frustrating because we want to contact the people that are making this key line decision. Um, at that, at that level, we can't get ahold of you. And Jim Drunkwell, who was the sheriff committed uh, at the time, said. That sounds like a, that, I, I understand that, that sounds like something we should follow up on. Um, I'm a member of one of the committees.
Yes, you are.
I, I volunteer, but I'm sort of like, you guys, you're pretty much volunteering, given what you're getting paid through this. You're not doing this to make money, you're doing it out of the.
Good excitement, Bill, let me, let me. That's excitement, that's excitement is the color, our paper, our gas, and most things that move around, so I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean. Four thousand dollars to do a year's worth of work is, and the hours you put into it, is pennies. And I don't think anybody up there is doing it for the money, you're volunteering to do something.
Mm-hmm.
You as uh, elected officials have to be accessible and accountable. The way to make elected officials accessible is to provide contact information. To make them accountable is to have them be able to engage the public and then they'll see the decisions that resolve from this. So I, I don't know why, I, I would never object to my phone number being on there, somebody has to call me about something I'm, I'm involved in as a committee. I think they should have the right to do that. Um, either email or, or phone number, um, Sockville's doing it, I don't think we should say, well, no one else is doing it, therefore we don't need to do it. If that's, that's not a very good reason in my mind. Uh, I don't know if anybody's talked to other people on the committees about this, I think the people on my committee would say, no problem, of course. We want to be called, we want to get the feedback, that's how we hear from the citizens, and they can't always come to these meetings. They can't do it that way, so, so this is their other avenue, which I think we ought to provide.
Thank you, and you know what's interesting? I heard that same comment from another trustee, that we should go back to the committees. Here's what I think we should do is, let's take a look at, um, let's take a look at what we're capable of doing with a protected email address. Two, I don't think I can go back or any of us can go back to the committee members that are currently there and say, we need your personal information. Or do that with new phone keys, saying, this is part of the process moving forward, we'll need your phone number, your email address. I'm not sure that would work very well, but I think looking at some type of an email contact that would go to public works board. That goes on to all of the members of the public works board, or to the planning commission, um, or um, a variety of these, I think that's something we can look into. Jessica, can we look into that and answer within two weeks?
Yes.
Or so?
Yep, I can look into the feasibility and functionality of that, yep.
One more, one more.
Just one more question, um, so possibly each committee might say that their committee members, is that something you'd get their interest in?
Uh, let's address this issue first, and we can't go a little back to that, is that fair enough? Okay, no action on that, I don't, I don't think it's up to the board on that. Um, let's uh, go to the given stuff from the village, please, for.
Um. The uh, village of Grafton's police department leases its fleet vehicles and an ongoing review of that program uh, has been. Um, in place as we um, progress into the uh, leasing of more and more vehicles and turning over. Uh, the village of Grafton has a police department fleet consisting of fourteen vehicles, we currently lease eight. With two more being delivered in twenty twenty-four. Um, that would bring our total to ten of the fourteen vehicles in the police department uh, fleet being leased. Um, there's been a significant discussion about the advantages, um, financially speaking to uh, leasing versus owning. Um, with that, um, I tried to break it down to the smallest common denominator. What would be a excellent illustrative point for um, discussing the cost of a lease? Over the cost of a purchase. Um, that said, Chevy Tahos make up the vast majority of our police fleet being the patrol vehicles. Um, with that, um, I put forth the table in the I F C noting each of the leased vehicles and the uh, current lease rate. You notice they will um, vary because the lease rates are directly impacted by the resale of. The uh, um, previous vehicle applied back towards the specific lease rate of um, the um, uh, vehicle in question. Um, so with that, there is a range there. And so what I did to try to break down um, the comparison and try to really make it as apples to apples as we possibly could. Um, looking at state contract pricing for a Chevy, Chevy Tahoe P P V, that's police pursuit vehicle. Um, which is what we lease. Um, I researched the um, again, state contract pricing for the um, purchase of the vehicle. The um, aftermarket accessory, um, parts being the screens, the brackets. Um, uh, the lights, uh, the switches, et cetera, that go into the vehicle. Um, and that produces a purchase price. Um, squads have about a four-year lifespan, that said, our lease program is a four-year lease on a police squad. Um, and so what I did is I took the average lease amount, because again, there is a varying amount um, of the. For the Tahos, I did not include the K nine squad, the K nine squad is currently being funded through the K nine foundation, so that lease hold. While it's documented, we are not paying that as a village. Um, so that said, taking the average monthly lease hold times twelve months, given, gives a cost per year. And I compared that with the cost per year of purchase, so there are advantages there with regards to the leasing versus the purchasing of the vehicle. The analysis that I put forth did only consider, uh, or excuse me, did not factor in um, such things as um. The increased sale proceeds, we realized through enterprise, they market out to a much larger, larger um, customer base than we do. Either through our own efforts or through a state website. Um, it did not factor into staff time savings, staff does not have to order. Uh, the aftermarket accessories, staff does not have to coordinate the installation, um, staff does not have to oversee any part of that. Um, then also the fact that the um, resale equity is being reapplied back into the uh, lease rates, thus lowering the lease rates over time, which is helpful to us. Um, and enterprise manages all of that, we are not um, in essence, taking up staff time with that. Um, so that being said, there are clear advantages to it, um, it is important to note, one specific question was asked as far as an interest rate on these leaseholds. Well, there is not a um, interest rate, there is a service fee that is paid to enterprise. Um, as part of our annual audit, we had to calculate what that would mean as far as if it were classified as an interest rate. And so on average, it would be a two-point-six percent uh, rate across the fleet, and that is what we reported as part of our uh, annual audit. Um, mathematics, if you will, um, to the auditing firm, so that said, there isn't a specific um, interest rate being paid. However, there is a service fee that's built into the leasehold of each vehicle, and again, doing that. Calculating out as to what that could equate to if it were an interest rate, um, that is represented in the I F C. Um, so that is an overview of where we're at with regards to the number of vehicles uh, currently being leased, what we're expecting and what the monthly. Rates being paid, uh, what those rates include, but then a snapshot comparison of a leasehold versus a purchase here and now today. If we purchased a twenty twenty-three Tahoe, or if we leased twenty twenty-three Tahoe.
Okay, thank you, Jesse, uh, just a, a couple of notes from my, my perspective here, um, before I move this out. Um, you know, I, I've spent some time speaking to um, other officers, uh, other chief law enforcement officers. And you know, uh, they were very concerned or surprised that we went to lease in one month. Um, and uh, in that discussion. It was important for me to ask a couple of questions, and the first question was, what's the average amount of miles you put on in your jurisdiction? Um, and that varied quite a bit, and certainly when you're putting on seventy-five to eighty thousand miles and you're serving a larger jurisdiction. Versus Grafton, and again, I don't know the average here, uh, average mileage of chief, it's not true today. But um, we're not putting on seventy thousand miles of company or the state would put on, on in a year. Uh, and they, you know, speaking to those folks, they were like, well, geez, I didn't understand this, well, at least with them it worked for us. And, and I get that, every jurisdiction is a little bit different. So I, let's just, my, my two cents on that, Clark, I'm gonna go you first here because you're so bright-eyed and voicey-tailed there in North Carolina. Do you have any concerns, any comments on this at all?
Yeah, just a quick clarification question for Jesse. Uh, so the numbers that you present there for the lease costs for the Tahos. Do those reflect a prior trade-in value, or was there nothing to trade in at the beginning for these leases?
Uh, they, they would reflect the sale of the old vehicle, so if it was a Ford Explorer, that would have been um, applied towards leasehold. Um, in the future, it will be a Tahoe for a Tahoe, um, as far as what we're leasing now. Um, enterprise would sell that and then reapply that back into the lease of the new Tahoe or whichever particular fleet vehicle. But these rates um, do uh, reflect the sale of, um, you know, if it was an old Ford Explorer, I believe we turned over an Impala. Um. Uh, but yes, that's, it's reflected there.
Okay, do you have a rough estimate as to what the discount is for those trade-ins?
I do not, I would have to look back what the uh, uh, realized value that was applied back to the lease, um, for each individual, I don't have that handy right now, no.
Okay, not a problem, that's all I have, thank you.
Jim, let's go to you.
Okay, um, Jesse, do we have a residual value for the vehicles that we have presently?
Uh, with regards to the, the Ford Explorers that we own?
No, with these Tahos, when we, when we lease them, there should be a residual value after the four years.
Uh, that is actually based on what enterprise sells them for, I don't have that right here in hand, and no, because market conditions change and they'll dictate. Um, in time when we go to resell that.
They don't give you a number upfront, what that vehicle is going to be worth in four years? It's an estimate because they, they bring in the sale price. So basically. Vehicle is fifty, the vehicle is fifty thousand dollars. And they sell a vehicle for twenty thousand dollars, at least it's less than a thirty thousand dollar value. So and it, each lease is different, it changes, um, and then, oh, getting to the A M V, we have to pay for half the A M V upfront and the rest of it gets applied to. Uh, lease. That's a little bit different, um, but at the end. I didn't, I didn't, I don't know about that as a savings, but it does show and then there's no mileage cap. Um, on it.
Well, that was another question, we can put up as many miles as we want.
Many miles on it a year and it doesn't matter.
And at four years, who cares how many miles are in there?
Correct.
And so to your question specifically, trustee Miller, no, we do not have a specific resale value because, or residual value because it's an estimate at the time we take the leasehold.
These leases are so much different than commercials, you and I, you and I look at, and they typically, uh. You know, your, your chief on the vehicle, that was. Let's say at twenty thousand miles on it. And let's, let's just look at this top, his Silverado, um, obviously at six hundred and seventeen dollars, Jesse and Paul, the trade-in. Uh, they're basically the same vehicle between chief and chief, the difference really in the lease payment was what vehicle we traded in on it.
Correct, we would anticipate we're gonna get a better resale value on the vehicles because. Um, they're gonna be traded a little bit sooner and Silverados retain their value.
So if chief turns in his, if, if four years old, and chief has ten thousand miles on his vehicle. So if Chief turns in his, if four years old, and Chief has ten thousand miles on his vehicle, that, that truck is gonna have an incredible value that's going to be able to pass on, where we can keep that truck and pay, continue to pay the lease payment, correct?
Correct. Just, just so we're all clear on that.
We're okay. Yeah. In the past, with our Explorers, they hit a certain number, and they'd get handed down to one other department, correct?
Correct. Instead of sold at auction? Correct. Right. There'd be no revenue.
What are we gonna do now when the Explorers eventually does appear?
Well, we can either, we have a couple of options there. We can either, with the last handful of Explorers, see if any departments need a vehicle and hand those down and go into a lease without any resale value being applied into it. We could resale those Explorers and continue with the fleet program in the PD and look to broaden out our approach for a lease program. We could look at, you know, individual leaseholds for departments, depending on their needs. We could purchase outright for an individual department if that would make more sense. So there are options there as we look forward. We are not completely out of owned inventory that could be handed down at this point. And we, oh, certainly. But we have to, we have options as we approach that point, so.
Yeah, one other thing. You know, and leasing vehicles have been out there for years and years. I'm just wondering why leasing just kicked in since Chief Capener took over a lease department. They used to buy their vehicles. Now, all of a sudden, if leasing was, is so good, what, how come it wasn't anything special back whenever?
I can't speak to the previous chief's decision-making process. Maybe you felt it wasn't warranted. Maybe it was too new of a program. I don't know. I have never looked into a fleet management program as an administrator. This was brought forward by Chief Capener. We looked into it. We saw some advantages specifically within the police department, so we pursued it and moved forward. Frankly, kudos to Chief Capener for being interested enough to explore options to see what might make the most sense, financially speaking, for the village, but also meeting his needs from a fleet standpoint to maintain a dependable and reliable fleet moving forward.
Anything else?
Yes. Does the fire department do that?
They do not.
That's all I have. Lisa, what's for you?
Do we know if there's any other departments around us that use leases?
I know Oak Creek leases vehicles. Now, I do not know what specific departments within Oak Creek, but I know Mequon, Cedarburg, Oak Creek, I believe the Ozaki County has started leasing fleet vehicles. Again, I cannot speak to what specific departments because I I understood they were
I think it's entry-level public works vehicles. I think we need to rephrase that question. Is it for police or for all of them?
I'm just interested in, I guess, I guess police. I'll narrow it down.
Okay, that I would have to verify.
Sure. Maybe you can get that.
Yeah.
I, I now didn't realize that other departments situate, and so that's interesting to know, because I know we were talking about possibly asking Amber about that, that that might be something she could do. So. Yeah, no.
No, it's a good clarification point. Yeah. Absolutely.
I know there's two counties that
Yep. Absolutely. Law enforcement lease. Absolutely.
Clark, you already went, so this is good thing.
Jesse, do the unmarked vehicles, do you know if those vehicles go home with the individuals at night?
They don't unless there's some extenuating circumstance, because if they were to travel with an employee home, that would be a taxable benefit, and that's a whole different ball of, ball of wax, so to speak, as far as tracking and whatnot. So unless there's extenuating circumstances, no, they normally do not travel.
Does that include the chiefs?
That should be including the chiefs, yes. So if there is being traveled for, just because, that is something I would have to look into. Extenuating circumstances is understood, but will do.
I just did like a broad search today. Internet just, these departments that, these vehicles, and there were many, many articles about these departments in other states. This seems like it's a pretty common thing from what I could take away from that. I know it might not be that common around here, but it seems like it's a growing trend. I think that, you know, there's only so much money in our capital fund availability here, and if we would go back to purchasing, to have to purchase four, maybe five vehicles at one crack, that's just really gonna hurt our capital fund and not be affordable, and we have a lot of other things that we need to look at as well. So I'm, I'm okay with the same thing.
Okay.
Thank you for stumbling this up. This is great. You can see the, the difference in cost. It is a, it is a significant cost savings per year. I like the lease much. I think it's great, and we're saving some.
David. Just so I'm clear, eight vehicles that we are leasing, correct?
Correct. We are currently leasing eight. We're expecting two in twenty twenty-four. That'll take us to ten.
And the cost savings to the village is around forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, correct?
I would have to extrapolate it. Yeah, I'm sorry. I would have to extrapolate it. I really tried to boil it down to give an apples-to-apples comparison.
I mean, I did so quick, and I will be, so I'm coming up with is saving to the village. Some are going to be twenty-one to twenty-two thousand dollars per year.
Yes. And the other advantage to it from a financial standpoint is the budgeting. A leasehold, you can budget. If you're looking at a purchase program, you're budgeting, you're budgeting as you go into that purchase cycle. So it is advantageous from, yes, a savings standpoint, but also simply an accounting standpoint, because it is static, if you will. Yep.
Just a quick heads up on this. I just want to ask a question. Chad, you are one of the recipients of our old, of our wonderful old Explorers. How's that working all for you?
It's pretty good. See, I haven't, I haven't had any issues or dealings with it or far as way down. Does have almost a thousand pounds.
Okay. Jessica, same. I know your inspectors have some too. Any issues at all?
Yes, we do have one of the, the old explorers. It is not in great condition, and is probably not safe for about forty-five miles an hour. It has many, many miles on it. And now that we have two inspectors, we, we will need to, at part twenty-four budget, explore options for that second vehicle, so. In, in the past, obviously, yes, I agree with Chad that it's worked out just fine.
Yeah, I, I think the, the other thing we have to look at is we have to look kind of like, and I hate to get into this all cost of coin, because you're great, great financial director, but when we have vehicles that are no longer used and turned over to another department, it goes, really, it's a general fund transfer, correct?
Correct.
So in a sense that these two departments get three vehicles at the expense of the police department, who could be turning those around into a decreased cost on their vehicle.
Correct.
Correct. Just, just don't check. So there's no action with this. I think we've got all of our questions answered. I think this was a good item to bring up, because I think we have a lot of questions about it. Hopefully, it's in blow, seven or eight months before we talk about it again, but we'll see what's, something we can bring back up. Okay, we're about two minutes, seven here. I promised everybody we do a bio break, but I'm gonna push you one more here. Let's see if we can get into accepting the impact fee report and direct shaft for draft amendments to municipal code three point four four and update police impact fee assessment as recommended in the report, Jesse.
A, a ten-thousand-foot look at the report. I appreciate the fact that Assistant Administrator Wolf took lead on this project, so I'm happy to give a summary, but particulars, I, I would absolutely have to defer to Ms. Wolf. That said, under state statutes, we can adopt impact fees, which we have. We have three. We have impact fees that help fund brand-new park improvements, not replacement park improvements, brand-new. Riverbend Park, our new community park with new infrastructure, that is impact fee funded. Impact fee that helps offset the construction costs of the municipal services facility, the DPW park and rec offices and the garage area. So that impact fee is in place, and then an impact fee to offset the construction costs of the addition to the police department as well. All of those are paid at time of permit issuance, and that said, have been around for quite some time. Overall, the study points to our park and rec impact fee as being sound, justified, and doing well. It points to our public works or municipal services facility impact fee is sound, justifiable, doing well. The police department impact fee, while justifiable, is not doing well. And that is based upon forecasts done at the time that impact fee was implemented. Now, an interesting nuance of those calculations is state law at the time allowed for, basically allowed a municipality, let's say, a one-hundred lot subdivision came in and was being proposed. State law basically said all one hun, the impact fee for all one hundred lots was paid at time of final plat, not at time of building permit that it is now. So hence, you could gobble up large dollars and large amounts of impact fees right up front instead of having to wait for building, for individual building permits to be issued. Hence, I think that is the reason behind the very aggressive forecast set forth for the police department impact fees. Hence, we're behind. Are, are they, are they still being collected? Absolutely. But what was forecasted in the initial callops and where we're at and where we need to get to vastly, vastly different. So that said, the report came forward from Trilogy Consulting to take a look. As I mentioned, one big thing is our impact fees are justified and not outside of the realm of market reality. But it did point to those difficulties with our police department impact fee in particular. So with that, that's an excellent phase one. This really tells us where we're at, what we have, and what are some recommendations we, we should look at and consider as an organization. So with that, the impact fee report does point to updating the governing ordinance as far as specific language in accord with state statute of how our impact fees are laid out, calculated, paid, et cetera. But also too, to revisit and recalculate that police department impact fee a, a needs assessment to update that, either that fee and or timetable accordingly. So that is a, a good summary as to what this report has to say and where we landed. Again, with that, for, for more granular information, I would defer to the project lead, Ms. Wolf.
Okay. All right. All right. So basically, what we have is we're gonna need a motion to accept the impact fee review report and direct staff to bear draft amendments to municipal code three point four four and update police impact fee needs assessment as recommended in the report. Need a motion and section.
I make a motion. I said.
Okay, in a second. Very good. Okay, let's have some discussion on this. Where should we start? Let's start with you.
I guess my question, how are the impact fees calculated that the police department are kind of falling short here? I swear.
Sure. Two, two things came into play with that one, I believe. It's kind of tough looking back in history and trying to determine what the thought process was, but the best we can determine is it was, state law was different then, where you collected a bulk impact fee for an entire plat instead of at time of building permit issuance. So right now, it's by lot being developed. So if there's a one-hundred lot subdivision, we don't get all one-hundred lots impact fees right up front, like it used to be, I think, around twenty twelve, no, two thousand, either way, early two thousands, the law changed, so we don't get that bulk influx of cash, those impact fee dollars. We have to buy lot, accumulate those impact fees. So that'd be item one as to why the disparity. Item two, I think, my opinion is the build-out forecast, the development forecast for the village at that time was overly aggressive. They thought more was coming sooner than what actually was realized. So hence the gap.
So is that a negotiated number, or is that?
No, that, that's, for lack of better put it, fancy mathematics. It's really about kind of taking a look at the market as it sits, trying to forecast it and what appears to be reasonable. It is really an expert, an industry experts mathematics that goes into creating that funding formula based upon market conditions and past experience.
The impact fee that's developed is, it identifies what you need today based on the population, what do you need in the future. Then you look at what size building do we need? We need to increase the building twenty percent because of future expansion and redevelopment in the village, then twenty percent of the cost of that project can be prepaid through impact fees. We do what it means that money, but they actually collect and pay for debt service for the public works. Our projects, I'd say, you have to, you have seven years to make that finisher. So what happened basically is that from the, from the, whoever provided that repayment schedule, that money that we collect, for sure, it's being filled in by tax filing. But the bottom line is, it identified is this amount, this amount that you can collect. So if it takes a year to collect or twenty years to collect, we still collect this small offset tax, like about a dollar amount, just to point that be absolute. Thank you.
Great, Pat.
I also noticed in here that we, we put all of our impact fees into one bucket, and they're recommending that we break them out into different.
Yeah, we keep them one cash account, but we do keep a spreadsheet of the collection and the interest or for each portion. But, well, what the consultant, and if we have to go to this whole, I think.
So the goal here is just to update the police impact fee.
Yes, that would be the primary focus. I am interested in exploring what could we do with regards to the park and rec impact fees? Well, yes, it's for new amenities, and I'll use the Veterans Park Pavilion Project as an example. Right now, there's not a kitchen there. There, there's a rough sink, if you will, but there's not a kitchen. The new pavilion, we're planning a kitchen. That is a new amenity. Now, it, yes, there is a shelter there with open air and enclosed and restrooms. So that would not be, but could we use a portion of impact fees for that new facility being the kitchen? So if we could say offset five percent of that project cost with impact fees, where right now we couldn't at all. We cannot apply park impact fees to the Vets Park Pavilion, the way it is set up. I'd like to explore that flexibility a little bit, and if we're able to achieve that under state law, great. It's just something I would like to look at, but the primary focus, yes, exactly, is the police department. Yep.
So currently, we're charging six hundred and thirty-one dollars per dwelling, according to the court. Do our neighboring communities also charge a impact fee for their police departments?
Impact fees will vary by community as far as what their purpose is. I do know other communities have impact fees.
Just wanted to compare.
Sure. Jessica, would you be able to speak to that?
I'm not familiar with the amounts of other cities. I know that did do a did do a quick inventory of other communities' park impact fees. And we, we were on the higher end compared to other occupied communities, but I, I think everyone has a park impact, but I'm not sure about other types of fees. And then look that up.
I would like to know that, yes. Thank you. And then on the ordinances online, which is chapter three point four four, it has the police impact fees, it has public works, but there's no listing for what parking that is. Our fees.
Yeah, I, if I can shake on what Amy's saying, if you don't mind. I, I think that when we do rewrite this, I'd like, I think we need, as we look through these codes, we need consistency.
Do you mean the, the impact fee ordinance itself? Yeah, we, we changed that, I think, a couple of years ago to remove the exact fee from the ordinance, or else every year we would have to amend the ordinance. So now, I, I believe that we made a change to just say that it would be, you know, adopted for, you know, the, for village ordinance, you know, annually. So that's where, you know, every year, the board public works makes a recommendation to either finance or village board to increase fees usually by two percent or so, and then the village board takes action on that, as, as well as the, the impact fee. This year was a little bit different. The village board, or I think the public works, and then village board did make those changes to our other types of, of annual fees, including our ERC fee, but we did not adjust the impact fee because we were undergoing this study.
I, I guess what I'm, we're seeing here, and I, I think there might be a disconnect here. But on impact three four four dot nine six, it specifically lists the dollar amount, Jessica. It does on oh nine eight, it specifically lists the impact fees for public works facilities, but doesn't, it doesn't state that. For parking or for a parking rack. So I'm just looking if we can get get some consistency. Maybe we just take the numbers out. And say, or put the numbers in for parking rack, just so.
The C P I, which is last year almost eight percent. I think side hustle that same thing last year, I think the C P I was five percent. And be increased to five. But yeah, so so it's better to have a. Escalator in the code than to have a specific amount because I may have to come back here.
Right. I think what we're just looking for is consistency between all three of them, and that makes sense.
Absolutely. As part of the follow up conversation, we'll we'll look to address that point as well. Absolutely. Yep. Certainly.
So how how much did this study cost? The impact was twenty three thousand dollars. They they have not held us all that. Okay, and have we ever done one? No, not not compatible.
Well, we've done that, like when the public works building must been constructed and did one at a time to identify what the. Initially, but never had a follow up at some point like this to say, what kind of fees would they should be?
And I did see that you did get some other estimates, and this was the best of them for. Part of those three. Um, the other interesting thing I saw on page two of the study where it talks about under Wisconsin statutes. Municipalities may have impact fees to pay for the portion of share capital costs. It talks about different areas in your municipality that can benefit from the impact fees. And one of them is fire protection facilities. Um, the R A T N code, three point four four. Apparently only does impact fees for those three areas. And I know that there's been some discretion um, generally about. In the future, the fire department may need to add on, build um. Housing, you know, uh, certain quarters. So what would it take for our community to? Again, it's a service that fire provides.
Sure. Oh, it could absolutely be applicable. Um, there, there is no doubt about that. And really what it would come down to is have a project scope. A project bid, so we'd have a number to work with to see what we would need to finance or pay back. With regards to the impact fees, have that study done to establish that new fee. So it would be at time of project. You don't do it in anticipation of. It's actually at time of.
So, um, and this is only for new, uh, it says public facilities for new developments.
Can only apply the need for the expansion, food development to an impact. You can't just be like, you know, for twelve thousand people.
Sure. Um, but again, I guess I'm confused because if we can take these three topics. Because they provide services for the community. Why can't we apply a service fee for the fire department that provides services to the community?
Can only with a capital expense. So once the if the building was going to be expanded, like for surgery, we had a library fee, and we also had a wire fee. Um, for the annex of the library. And again, you can only calculate to, you can collect apps. Once you collect apps, you can't collect from anybody else. So you could have someone come in today. Oh, you paid four thousand dollars, that's our balance. The person comes in tomorrow for the, they don't have to pay that. It's it's an office that identify that has to be dated. Capital cost. To the new next development where it's good. Uh, increased population over the next couple of years.
Okay, so in the future, we can.
I think Chief identified that today, staff meeting. Talking about which is, it's kismet. You know, um, so I think that, uh, you know, my my thoughts on this is. We have to be cautious in being able to look at what our needs are versus how expensive these projects end up being. Because they ultimately get passed along to um, our uh, builders, uh, to our renters. However, I do think, um, Jesse brought up a great point. Once we have a. Cost associated with a specific project that's worthwhile investigated. So I think it's. Uh, I I agree with this. Um, I we are, our police departments both need work and uh. Relatively soon, as soon as we can get that estimate from Chief Rice to be able to look at what we need to do. And that's a method that I'm sorry to say this, folks, but that's a mess because we have ARCA funding. It's just so many, it's three different ones that we're all there, and I think we've got to get our hands on.
Just wanted to add that there can be a. Big range and what an impact fee is from community duty because depends on what's intensive growth. What kind of building are you, are you constructing? What's your addition? Um, so, you know. You know, like that number is that probably part of the reason why.
Okay, very good. Uh, I think we're pretty well. Uh, Clark, you want to go again?
I haven't had the chance to go on this item yet. Not a problem.
My bladder is kind of full here, you know, so.
No, I I understand. I'll keep this quick. I just wanted to second what Jesse mentioned with regards to reviewing for parks. Facilities in existing parks. As the village continues to grow, it's going to put more pressure on our existing parks. And um, I see that through the report, parks regularly updates its impact fee study. It looks like the next one will be twenty twenty five. And so perhaps as a recommendation to staff, Director Hoyer and the Parks and Rec Board. Uh, come that twenty twenty five impact fee study for parks to also consider amenities in existing parks. That might also qualify for impact fees to support those things.
Very good. Two, three. Okay, we're talked out here. And so we've got a motion in a second. Take a vote on this. We're looking at here, uh, motion to accept the impact fee review report and direct staff to. Prepare, we've already got a motion in a second. Let's vote on this one. All in favor, say aye. That motion carries. Okay, I did announce uh, before the meeting that we take a bio break here. It's gonna be a long meeting, so why don't we adjourn for five minutes here? And uh, we'll come back at approximately twenty five after. We need a motion to adjourn five minutes. Okay, five minutes. Everybody. Seven twenty four. Hi, class. Welcome back to part two. Part did, um, we'll uh, start working here with the report of finance, accepting the Monsanto.
Jesse. Certainly, uh, we walked through this uh, in greater detail a- at the finance committee, so I won't, I won't bore you with that. But the long and short of it is. Um, through trials and tribulations of the uh, court system, uh, Monsanto was ordered uh, through a class action suit to pay out settlements. Um, that said, um, that settlement was calculated as part of the legal process and. We received a check here at Village Hall. No cover letter, um, simply a check in the memo line saying environmental settlement. So we did do due diligence. Um, we spoke with attorney Herbrand on it, um, the um, environmental attorney who helps us with our M S four permit. Which is our state stormwater management permit. Um, we contacted uh, uh, him. Uh, and worked through their firm as well and researching it. And first of all, it's legitimate, so life is good there. But second of all, and more importantly, what we wanted to make sure. Sometimes when you accept a settlement, that then you forfeit any possible um. Challenge rights or rights to pursue any further action in a particular case. Um, that being said, part of the class action suit and the decision and the settlement. There are no further challenges in this. This is the end all be all payment by Monsanto. We're done. Um, or anybody for that matter. So we are not forfeiting any legal rights by accepting the um, settlement. So with that, uh, it was brought forward to finance committee, walked through the process. And what staff is recommending is to accept the settlement. It's sizable, hence we're coming forward to. Uh, committee and board, but also to place those proceeds in our environmental fund. Our environmental fund is a special revenue fund that was established. Through a different environmental settlement um, some time ago, which has been funding the ongoing monitoring. Um, work at Limekiln. As as we know, Limekiln Park is a reclaimed lime mine, but also was served as the. Uh, village dump for quite some time. So therefore, there is environmental monitoring requirements that the village does need to carry out. So we are uh, recommending that this settlement be placed, be accepted number one, and then those proceeds be placed within the environmental fund. To continue that ongoing testing and monitoring uh, in the Limekiln area.
Motion in second, uh, to accept the Monsanto public coordinated by female settlement and direct staff to place settlement proceeds in the environmental fund.
Make the motion. I'll second.
Motion in second, any discussion?
How much you some of you? How much you can get?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. That motion carries. Thank you. All right, uh, let's go to uh, proof liability insurance claim process. I think we were all here for finance, so.
Sure, ten thousand foot look at it, uh, as recommended by Civmic Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, our new liability carrier. Um, they are recommending that we um, establish a formal process for liability insurance claims against the village. Um, that said, we modeled um, our process in speaking with other communities, Civmic communities. Um, as well as input from Civmic themselves. And so what we have is in essence a two tier system. We're proposing uh, for adoption. Twenty, a claim for twenty five hundred dollars or less would be handled administratively at a staff level. The merits would be reviewed and whether or not, and working with Civmic, whether or not that claim should be paid. Uh, above and beyond twenty twenty five hundred dollars would come to the finance committee and ultimately the village board. With um, information from staff and Civmic as to how to proceed with that particular claim. So it is a two tier system. Uh, and again, being recommended by uh, Civmic, our liability carrier to establish a fully. Upfront and transparent process that folks understand. Our old process was simply, we got a claim, sent it to the insurance carrier. They said yes or no. That was it. There there was no documentation. There was no process. It was ship it off. We got an answer. Um, communicated the answer. It was done. Um, this is a much more um, upfront for um, residents or claimants. Um, process and it actively involves staff as well as policymakers um, as appropriate.
Pretty good. Um, let's go with a motion to prove the liability insurance claim process.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in second, any discussion on this at all?
Just got one question. I average how many claims I would file.
Oh, go. Katie, go. Yeah, I didn't have a number off the top of my head is unless they really get into the major, yeah, yeah. Unless they get into the major category, I frankly don't see many of them. So actually, this new process will be helpful for me as well. I'll be more in the loop. As to what claims are brought forward, so.
Any further question?
Do we pay all those out or is that just handled on staff level?
Uh, twenty five hundred, under this proposal, twenty five hundred dollars or a claim for twenty five hundred dollars or less. Would be handled at a staff level with guidance from Civmic. Anything above twenty five hundred dollars a claim for would be handled with guidance from Civmic, guidance from staff through committee and village board.
Sure. Have we, have we paid any on the past five years, let's say?
We have paid claims, yes, um, but not right.
And those claims do go on the tables. Okay, any further questions, Clark? Okay, good. So, motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Uh, that motion carries. Let's go to Department of Ops to report.
Nope, Report of Plan Commission.
Report of Planning Commission. How could I miss that, looking at the wrong eye? Okay, uh, certified survey map. The dedication of forty square feet of public right of way. I believe this is the Heinz fifty seven. Forty square feet, we've already given the project.
Yep, this is the very last step in the process with regards to getting the right of way and property lines um, clarified, if you will. Overtime, it's a historic. Um, area in which roads being built, sidewalks being installed, property lines established, they frankly intermingled over time. What this exercise has done is to clarify where the right of way sits, where the property line sits. And making them match with legal descriptions that are recorded um, for the property. Um, this is the last bit of it whereby um, a dedication of forty square feet of public right of way, I believe it is all sidewalk. In this particular case, um, existing sidewalk, mind you, um, it would be um, accepted via certified survey map.
Pretty good. You know, motion in a second on this to get this to the table. Okay, in second, any discussion of this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Certainly, just a couple of items here this evening for the village board. Um. Budget process is ongoing. Um, we at a staff level send out budget instructions to the department heads in July. Um, August first is the first deadline for uh, budgetary summits being staffing change requests. Um, those were due August first. Um, actual full department budget summits are due to finance and administration by the end of August. Um, with that, over the course of September, then there are staff level meetings to refine those individual departmental requests into an executive budget. Which accounts for the entire organization. Um, but also, department heads will make their committee presentations with what their requests are. And to see if there's any um, additional discussion points to be reviewed there. Um, and also just taking a look at the needs and wants being illustrated by the individual departments. Um, then by early October, we do publish out a book to the village board. As you guys get a few, a couple of weeks to review that document in advance of a late October budget workshop or budget workshops. Um, so that is really a high level look at the uh, budget calendar, but just know. That is really um, one of the heavy lifts for not only staff, but also you as policymakers during the course of the year. And we are well into that process. That said, um, staff is anticipating um. Either late August or early September, a quick visit with um, the committee of the whole to simply go through and discuss items such as. Um, um, influences on the budget that are out of our control, health insurance updates, um. Or premium rates, um, workers' comp rates. What is the Wisconsin retirement system contribution rate going to be? Um, what is state shared revenue come shaping up as? What are um, transportation aids shape shaping up as? Um, and then also to speak to those influencing factors of the budget. Um, to help with, um, because we do have a fairly new village board to speak to that, but also to look to see. Um, where staff is what we're seeing with trends for requests. Um, but also what we're seeing with net new construction numbers, some assessment figures and all of these nuances that play into. The final calculation of and presentation of an executive budget. So we will be having a um. Not a complete budget workshop, if you will. Um, I I'm I'm thinking leaning towards early September. But the committee of the whole can get an understanding and flavor of. Not just the departmental requests that go into the budget, but what other factors need to be considered with that. Um, and so I'm looking for a good discussion there, um, some some feedback as well. And it is at those late October budget workshops where we really get into the give and take. Um, and and formulation and refinement of that executive budget proposal. So that is kind of a quick overlook of where we're at. Budget wise, uh, or budget process wise, rather. Um, one other quick update, um, the uh, um, home now vacant at Falls and Port Washington Road. Um, which is going to be the farmstead development that is currently being used for fire department practice. Um, we were able to work with the developers. So over the course of the next couple of weeks, our fire department has been on site, but they continue to. Be on site and train going through the house and using the accessory structure as well prior to its demolition. So that is a great um, advantage. Um, for our fire department. And then uh, this week, um, we have found a water main break on the area of Meadowbrook Court. Which will be repaired uh, this week. Um, so just to give you as policymakers a heads up on that. Water main breaks do require um, public notice, door to door notice. water main breaks do require, um, public notice, door-to-door notice, to make sure folks know when water service will be on or off, and that will be in the area. But just to give you guys a heads up that in the area of Meadowbrook Court, a water main break will be repaired this week. Um, that is my update for the board this evening.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, let's go on to licenses, uh, approval of the, uh, operator licenses. This should look to be pretty much straightforward here. Um, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the issuance of operator license that.
That's it.
In a second.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
For motion in second, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Uh, looking for approval to issue temporary expansion premises for the Bridge Inn Vicarage License. Twelve sixteen Bridge Street for the date of September twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, from twelve P M noon until nineteen hundred or seven P M for those non-military times.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion on that at all? All right, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, I'm carrying. Now, let's go on to, uh, village expenditure, because it's quite an education, and I can tell you how happy I am to see people asking these questions. Both of us have been around here a while. Still can't, to be real, some of these expenditures, but you know, there's a lot of good questions going back and forth. Are there any other questions that need to be asked at this point in time, uh, that weren't covered as part of the annual exchange with Jeffy? With that said, I'll be looking for the motion in second for approval of village expenditures of one million one hundred ninety-three dollars, or one million, one hundred ninety-three thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Now, look to convene into closed session pursuant to statute, Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one E for real estate and competitive bargaining matters. Update on eight eighty-seven North Green Bay Road and Parkland appraisal. How long do you think we're going to be in this one?
Uh, it'll take a good, uh, twenty to twenty-five minutes till it walks through everything.
Twenty, twenty-five minutes, and then we'll come back to, uh, open session and take care of any business that does come out of the closed session.
Motion in a second.
Okay, sorry. Need a motion to go to close session. Motion in a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, trustee Miller.
And then Dave, aye?
Aye.
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 Aye.